Roll call please.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Nevin?
Here.
Okay, we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll begin with reading of our mission statement. The school district of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering the quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential. We'll start with the Rockwell Services Committee.
Yes, we're very happy to have Roman Bookdell with us this evening who is running for our own seat on the board of the committee. Just a couple of weeks from now, they need to go.
Um, hello, again, I'm Roman Bookdell. I want to thank all of you for the education and opportunity. A little back around my corner. Yeah, I need to slide. This is Fort Atkinson community. It's been deeply rooted in its communities with friends and family, friends and their children. Fort Atkinson has been the only community that I have known and one that has supported my family well. The question that has been asked multiple times is, why would I want to be part of this school board? The answer is truly multifaceted, in one that I feel strong, one word, and that is future. If we have learned anything from this pandemic, it is to focus on the present, although it is what we do with the present that delivers the future. So as a teacher, I'm an advocate of students' character and education, both I believe have truly been tested this past year. I taught my students to be involved citizens. If you're curious about the world, then you have to be part of it. So, I want to be part of it, I want to learn, and I want to be part of it. I want to participate in the present so that I can positively affect the future. My hope is that I can serve the board with value, send it to all students and families, and continue to bridge this community so that our present can still happen to the future. At this time, I welcome any questions you have of me, otherwise I appreciate the time given and look forward to working with all of you. The more you see, the more you get.
Thanks. Any questions? Nope, not really.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we'll receive comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone needs to provide comments, please step forward to the podium. Okay. Did you receive any online?
We have done offer to account.
All right. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Sure, as we know, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to ensure intensive technical review, and they will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda had requested any board member. This evening, the consent agenda includes item A, minutes February 18, 2021, meeting. Item B, Board Policy 30.1, update and technical corrections, that is the second read. Item C, personnel requests. Personnel today, we have a number of different items. First of all, the board has education by the thing, Brent Corrigan, Berry Elementary School Principal, for his 17 years of service and dedication to the students and community of the school district of Fort Atkinson upon his resignation. The retirement request of Michael Hall, 1.0 FTE English Teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Theodore Hanson, 1.0 FTE Physical Education and Help Teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School. Patricia Snyder, 1.0 FTE Kindergarten Teacher at Berry Elementary School. Sandra McLean, 1.0 FTE Math Teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School. And Craig Instrom, 1.0 FTE Vocal Music Teacher at Fort Atkinson High School, effective at the end of the 2020-2021 school year, and be accepted. Further, the board would also like to thank Michael Hall for his 30 years, thank Theodore Hanson for his 23 years, Patricia Snyder for her 23 years, Sandra McLean for her 33 years, and Craig Instrom for his 30 years of service and dedication to the students and community here in Fort Atkinson. The board would also like to thank Kevin Marshall, the Fort Atkinson Middle School custodian, for his 25 years of service and dedication to the students upon his retirement this spring as well. Then item D, Start College Now, early college credit programs requests and youth options report. Item E, the school nursing services contract. Item F, Gifts to the Board.
Gifts to the school district.
This evening, the board would like to accept the donation from F.A. Gas on behalf of ExxonMobil in the amount of $500, this going to Fort Atkinson High School. Item G, budget transfers. And then item H, payment of district bill and the treasurers report.
Right. Does anyone on the board want to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion on a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
And we'll need a roll call, please.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Nevin?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right. Moving on to 2021 summer school course offerings.
Yes, we're very happy to have Mrs. Oakley, our Director of Construction, with us this evening. As much as we're excited to see Mrs. Oakley, we're much more excited that we are looking at having in-person summer school. So as is tradition, Mrs. Oakley and her team are working hard to put the foundation in place for a successful start coming up in June, and as is customary, she's going to share the initial course proposals with you this evening.
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Abbott. Is this on? I don't think it is. I don't think it is either. Oh my goodness, an actual microphone. This is quite the middle of the summer. Yeah.
Right.
There's a lot of excitement around summer school, my friends. Good to see you wore clutch today. Is that why I'm looking at it? I'll take the hint. Should I go ahead and destroy? All right, I'll try to use my teacher voice. We are very excited to talk about summer school. Right now. All right. The questions I'm getting right now, as Dr. Abbott said, are, number one, are you having summer school? And then everyone's like, oh, yes, yes, we're having summer school. And then the second question I get is, will it be in person? So we are saying yes. Knock on wood. Pending nothing, crazy, or unexpected, we are absolutely thrilled to think of having an in-person summer school. And people are asking, well, how will it look? And I'm telling them, very similar to how school looks right now. So unless something really changes regarding mitigation strategies, we'll have similar mitigation strategies for summer school. We also are excited that we are offering an all-virtual access to all of our academic courses. So if a family does not feel comfortable studying a child in-person summer school yet, they will still have access to all of our academic classes. And we are offering some virtual camps, as you might have seen in your packet, as well as we'll collect interest. And if there's enough interest in a virtual section for an enrichment class, we'll see if we can offer that as well. So lots of options to continue what we're doing during this school year. So as you saw in your packet, so many offerings, right? Lots of offerings. We have already been telling how many people have been calling to ask for these, so just so you know you've got like the hot, like hot off the press, secret copies until you approve them this evening. But lots and lots of offerings for elementary, middle school, and high school. So as typical this year, I'd just like to walk us through kind of how those break down. For elementary and middle school students, we are looking at 43 different enrichment courses. And enrichment is for fun, classes that are just really enriching their academic experience. We also are offering 12 academic maintenance courses, which are for students who are largely at grade level, targeted at just keeping their academics current over the summer. In addition, we're offering 12 intervention courses, both remedial and extension for students who are advanced learners. We are offering 26 enrichment camps, and that's something we're really proud of. For some families, that full summer school session doesn't work, so finding ways for people to connect with us, even if they can't make the five-week commitment, is something we've been working towards. So proud of 26 offerings in that area. And then in addition, our middle school, we have four other intervention camps that are going on for academics. At our high school, 14 enrichment camps for our high school learners, four academic camps, two intervention camps, 16 credit recovery offerings, as well as three special education offerings. So I always like to give a little shout out to our brand new classes. So in addition to the oldies but goodies like Minecraft and Pokemon and Ultimate Sports, this year we're adding a digital photography and video production. So if your kid wants to grow up to be a YouTuber. And there's not many of those out there, right, Reondo? But if you want to, we're going to help you figure out how to do it well. We also have had a lot of requests for keyboarding. And like I said, our families always know the best classes for us to offer, so we are going to offer keyboarding this summer. We have a new music class that is a composition class based on movie music and soundtracks. We have a new music class with our littles over here called Music Makers. We are anticipating a hot class this year might be a class called Video Game Design, where we are going to learn how to build video games. We also have a new wearable art. And a one-time-only offering, those who did not have many kindergarten last summer are very nervous that they missed Safety City. So we are running, it's a really big deal. So one time and only one time, for the kids who are, who missed it last year, we are running Safety City for our first graders, so they can access that very important class that we offer for our community. So lots of new classes. For camps, we have a gymnastics camp that is new this year. We also have a girls' basketball camp and an oceanography camp. At the middle school, a flag football camp, another girls' basketball offering, a Harry Potter Steam Camp, and an orchestra kickoff, especially for those students who maybe didn't do orchestra this year for the first time and want to still join, so they can start before the school year. High school camps that are new, we have a new jazz camp, rhythm boot camp. We have summer Spanish I, which is an extension camp for our eighth grade students who had maybe more of an interrupted year to prepare for that high school course. We have a very exciting addition to our strength, speed, and conditioning offerings at the high school with a swimming conditioning camp, where there'll be opportunity for them to use the pool, and a student leadership challenge camp. So nice offerings, new things. What we are perhaps most excited about new this year is some August offerings. And our approach to offering families some academic choices for their kids are really thinking about doing it in the most fun, student-centered way possible. So we're going to offer two August offerings. For students going into grade, we are launching the Fort Atkinson School District's STEAM Academy, which will be a week-long math, science, reading, and problem-solving camp located at Fort Atkinson Middle School with lots of hands-on projects and activities. So that is a very exciting August addition for us this year. So in total, we have 132 offerings for our summer school program, which we are very excited about. In 2019, we had over 1,300 students participate in summer school. So we are really hoping and anticipating that we will have lots of friends who want to hang out with us this summer, so. I get, the other question I get asked a lot is, what about academic recovery or catching up? And so my answer is, we have some very robust academic programming for all learners alongside what I'm considering super fun, super fun enrichment classes and camps, making sure that kids are excited about learning, can hang out with friends, and overall want to attend summer school. So just a couple reminders that we hold ourselves to, summer school is free. There's no charge for anything for summer school. We pride ourselves for student safety, same practices we do during the school year. We offer bus transportation for our elementary students, both from Berry and Rockwell to Purdy and Luther. We really work hard, and we have up to this point made sure 100% of our students get into the classes that they request, as long as they do so during priority registration. So it's really important that you get on the computer and get your requests during priority registration, because then we can offer the number of sections we need to make sure kids get what they want to take. We are hoping to be able to offer our summer school open house, as well as our middle school kindergarten orientation, and we'll just continue to evaluate how safe that feels as we get closer. And then we're excited to continue to partner with our summer food service program for breakfast and snack, and maybe even potential for lunch this year. Again, all free to our students, so. So save the date, priority registration on Friday, April 9th. The course offerings will go up on the website tomorrow. We will also send home paper copies with students on Thursday, April 8th. And like I said, there's no competition, these don't close, as long as you do it in priority registration, we will do our best to get your child the classes they want. So can I answer any questions you might have at this time?
You said there was 132 offerings. How is that compared to previous years? I don't remember.
We're down by eight from 2019. Mostly those are camps that just kind of have natural variation, but very similar in offerings to pre-COVID, pre-last summer.
Sure.
So.
Can we go to them?
You want to come hang out? I will find work for you. No. I actually have had people ask that, can I help? And we, up till this time, we've typically had a place for adult volunteers as well. We'll see what the summer brings. But our goal is always that when kids sit down to look at that list, that they have trouble picking, because there's so many good choices. And that's our challenge. So when people tell me that, like, oh, we had such a hard time picking, that makes my heart like, yay, because that's what we shoot for. Yeah, we are, we're really working collaboratively, middle school and elementary teams. Matt Wolf comes to us with some really awesome experience with that in a program he led in Janesville. So we're learning from him, but our intention is to get some real excitement around science and technology and math and art and engineering two weeks before school starts, so that we are having them do some really awesome academics within the context of just having some really cool, some really cool experiences. And we're hoping that families will take us up on it when they're looking to fill their August.
From the staffing perspective, were we having any troubles staffing these classes? Or how's that looking? Curious, you know, if there's any difference between these classes?
I'm probably down a hair, but we'll start, as soon as the proposals are, or the courses are approved today, I'll get postings up. So if you know of someone who is interested in teaching summer school, about 40% of our summer school staff is not Fort Atkinson School District employees. When I first started this, we were really limited by what our people would offer, and we made the decision that we wanted to offer what our kids wanted, and so we went out and found the teachers to teach it. So if you know of someone who teaches, who wants to teach summer school, I'd love the recommendation, but we'll hire and we'll find those teachers. And I'm feeling pretty confident that people appreciate that our program is well-run and established, and we usually don't have a problem getting employees, but I'm excited to get those postings out and get started.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other question? No, I can't wait. Neither. Good stuff. All right, so we are looking for a motion to confirm our school program offering.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approved the 2020, yeah, 2021 summer school program course offerings.
I'll second.
All right, and this is our vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our high school, high school public utility easement.
Yes, we're very happy to have representatives from the city with us this evening. We have Andy Sully, who is the city engineer, and also very happy to welcome to our first order Rebecca Hausman-Lamire, who is our new city manager. So welcome, certainly, to our community, and also to talk about something that's pretty intriguing.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm Rebecca Hausman-Lamire. I'm the new city manager for the city of Fort Atkinson. I'm very excited to be here. I actually live in Janesville, but I come to you from the village of Darian, where I spent some time, and the city of Bulleye before that. So so far, I've been on the job for a few weeks now, and things seem to be going really well. And a big part of that is my colleague, Andy Sully, who is the engineer and public works director for the city. We've got a really good team, and I'm very pleased to be here. So the reason we're here tonight is to request that the school board approve a easement for us to run utilities. You can see on the map in front of you, I think you can all see this, we have, the property that is outlined in yellow is a property in the town of Koshkane that the city of Fort Atkinson owns. We need to serve this with utilities in order, well, we need to bring it into the city and then serve it with water and sewer utilities in order to develop it as we want to develop it with residential uses. So what we are actually requesting, and I'm not sure if this will work or just advances, but if we can go to the next slide there, thank you. You can see the, that is our current water and sewer infrastructure in the area. The sewer infrastructure is in green, and the water infrastructure is in blue. And what we are requesting is a 70-foot-wide easement that will start at Campus Lane, which is on the south side there, and going north to basically the second driveway for the high school. And that would be a permanent easement, and we would put our water and sewer utilities in there, and then we would restore it to what's existing. If you go to the next picture, you can see that is 70 feet wide, starts at Campus Drive, and goes north to about where I mentioned with the last map. The next slide there is our utility easement agreement. The school district staff has reviewed this easement agreement. They've offered some suggestions. Those are included in the document provided to you in red. And I would be happy to answer any questions that I can answer, and we've got Andy here too, if he needs to help me out with those.
When do we expect this to, any work to start on this?
Well, I think one of the things that's important is this is just the opportunity.
Sure.
So there are a number of places that we can take you to get to that property. And so we may or may not come to you and say, if you'd mind, we actually exercise this option. In terms of the overall development of the land up there, Rebecca and I have been moving forward with the annexation process, that's a first order business. Once we get that figured out, then I can more specifically tell you when you might just start doing some more things.
Sure.
I would say in the next quarter.
We were hoping for a name.
I think there's a few kids that you'd like to see in top of the.
So can you tell me why this, you need this permanently in place now versus down the road when you're actually annexing your property?
It's just planning. So it's an easy ask. There's a lot of opportunity for the school districts and the city to have some common interest in this property. The school district, I know, is happy, but could be improved with their ingress or their transportation plan around the high school, so that's something we talked about. And it's easy for us now to kind of bring this before you when we're not waiting on some other deadline. We're getting out ahead of something for once instead of reacting, so frankly, that's definitely.
Working in development, I understand. Thank you. Any other questions?
As you've heard, the city has made this very easy for us to work with, and Mr. Paul was first meeting that as the board subcommittee last week, and we had a presentation on this and our next item on the agenda as well. And as you heard, we were provided language that referred to our council, and we're in agreement with the backing board, so.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll look for a motion.
Be resolved that the public utility easement agreement for parcel number 226-0614-3214-000 be granted to the city of Fort Atkinson Public Wastewater Utility, Public Water Utility, and Public Stormwater Utility.
I'll second.
Great. And that is the voice votes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. I didn't hear any.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to district auditor recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Demerath is with us this evening, our Director of Business Services, to provide the board an update on the process and then the recommendation for a new district auditor.
Good evening. Following the resignation of our prior audit firm, Wagner CPAs, a request for proposal process was initiated. We ended up getting seven proposals for audit services. The first step in comparing those proposals was to compare the proposed costs. After reviewing each proposal and qualifications, as well as the cost comparison, I narrowed the field down to three firms based on those factors. They were Hawkins Ash CPAs, Lauterbach and Eamon LLP, and Whitley. After that, I sought references from clients of those three firms, and based on the proposals, qualifications, and references, any of them would have served the district well. And the final step in the evaluation process was for the Finance and Operations Committee to conduct interviews with each firm, and they did that last Thursday. There was also some materials requested in advance of the interview for committee review. All this information was available to the committee and the board along the way. And following the interviews last week, the committee agreed to recommend Lauterbach and Eamon LLP. They were the lowest cost by nearly 50%. And the reasoning for that is that they discounted their rates, as we would be their first Wisconsin client, they're out of Illinois. They've been doing Illinois audits for many years and are focused solely on auditing governmental entities, so they know our. Um, so they know our, our service is inside and out, and the committee believed they're a good fit, um, for the district. So they're, that's who they're recommending this evening.
Any questions?
I wanted to add that, um, Mark and I obviously met with, um, with some of the folks that submitted proposals, and for behalf of the board, we want to thank all of the, um, organizations that applied, especially the ones that made the final cut and spent time, you know, speaking with us. Um, we appreciate all that effort. Um, we thought that they were all very highly qualified. But we, we figured at the end of the day, the, the, the group that we're, I guess, um, likely to go with here, uh, gave us an opportunity to save a bunch of money because they really want to basically get into our market. So we're, we're off, being offered kind of a unique opportunity. You know, they help us, we help them. So we thought that in, in the interest of saving a few dollars, actually more than a few dollars, that this was a good opportunity for us. So, um, it was pretty unanimous after we spoke that, that this is the way that at least the, the people on the, on the, uh, committee thought we should move forward.
And is that savings for one year or is it longer?
Nope, it's, um, so we could go up to five years and it'd be all five years.
Wow.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing just to keep in mind is that although there's not really any concern there, they did, um, say that they'd be comfortable, uh, including a clause, I guess, in the contract so that we could reevaluate this after a year.
Yeah.
Just as kind of a good faith measure so that they don't have any buyer remorse, so.
Yep, so it's a yearly engagement, and so what's being approved is this year's engagement, but we just keep moving forward if everything was, was good each year.
Any other comment? Question? All right, um, we're looking for a motion.
Be resolved that Lauterbach and Eamon LLP be approved as the district's auditor.
I'll second.
First motion by Ms. Nickram, seconded by Ms. Reynolds. And that is a voice vote. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up is our waiver of the 2020-21 school registration fee.
Yeah, so the board in packet and the community have access via the website of, uh, a memo again from Mr. Demerath. Um, our suggestion to the board, um, given the nature of COVID, the impact on families and, and, um, the changing levels of services in the school district this year, um, that we consider waiving the regular school fees for students in grade, in the early through grades 12, um, for the 2020-21 school year. Um, as is discussed in the memo, um, people who have already paid that fee for this year, um, that money will, um, pay any back, uh, fees that perhaps some people have in the top, um, or that money will be there waiting for them to use heading into the new school year, um, should fees remain as, as the same as they are now. Uh, we think it's a very nice offer to the community to acknowledge some of the challenges that we've had this year. Um, and, uh, we're excited to bring that to you as an opportunity this evening. Um, Mr. Demerath is here, as you just saw, should you have any questions about the memo? Um, but I think it's a very thorough document. Uh, we do have communication ready to share with families tomorrow, um, should this, um, should this idea, um, move forward this evening.
All right, any questions?
I think it's awesome. You know, with everything that's happened with all the different families and whatnot, doing this little bit, I think it's great.
All right, um, we will look for a motion.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the waiver of registration fees for kindergarten through 12th grade students for the 2020-21 school year, and be it further resolved that any registration fees paid to date for the 2020-21 school year first, be first applied towards any other outstanding student fees and then made available as a balance within the student's account for future payment of fees, and that no direct refund payments be made except to parents, guardians, or guardians of graduating seniors that have already paid the fee.
Can you read a second?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Paul, seconded by Mr. Nickram, and that's a roll call, please.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneethen?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
All right, motion pass. Getting the hang of this guy. All right, next up is the date for the board reorganization and retrieve.
Is a post, uh, post-election free April board meeting. The board does need to reorganize, um, with, uh, a newly seated member. The date was shared earlier, um, that consensus was around, um, April 26 at 5:30 PM.
All right, um, and we're looking for a motion on that.
Be resolved that the board, that the reorganization meeting of the Board of Education be scheduled for Monday, April 26 at 5:30 PM in the Luton Board Room.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Nickram, seconded by Ms. Reynolds, um, and that is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up is our strategic plan update.
All right, well, good evening. We were very excited last month to, um, relaunch the relaunch of the strategic planning process, um, that we're going to move aggressively and thoroughly through over the next few months, um, so that we'll be able to head into the 2021-22 school year, um, with a very results-driven, uh, strategic plan to help move us forward. So as I shared last month, um, part of the, the background here is that success is in fact no accident. It truly is the hard work, the perseverance, the learning, the studying, the sacrifice, and most of all, the love of what you're doing or learning to do. And that is really, I think, an, a significant underpinning for us as we work forward through this strategic, um, planning process. I think I, I've said, um, plenty of times, and others have heard it clearly as well, our movement is to that of results. What are our kids learning? What is it that we can be doing to be growing and improving in the future? We shared last month that we had, um, several steps to success, um, for the board to consider. Uh, we had five different phases we suggested. The first, um, in regrounding, the second in reflection and reimagination, the third in definition, then design, and then embarking on the new plan. So as you saw from the last slide and from last month's presentation, we find ourselves in this place of regrounding. Um, what is important to the 114 and what is, uh, important to our larger community? So we have been working through staff and community engagement on our district beliefs and guiding principles, um, sort of the foundational underpinnings of, upon which our new strategic plan will be built. Um, we've asked that the board consider drafts of the district beliefs and guiding principles, and that those drafts are then shared with staff, family, and our community for feedback. And then eventually we'll be, um, looking to finalize, um, officially our beliefs and guiding principles, uh, when we bring that whole plan together a little later this summer. So I'm very excited to say that in the short few weeks since we were less in this room, last in this room together, um, we have been working very hard, um, and we're offering the board and the community, uh, a set of, of draft or a set of guiding principles for your consideration. Um, all of these materials, again, are available online. We're excited, um, the basis, if you recall, on the guiding principles, um, the school district of Fort Atkinson acknowledges parameters and guidelines that we work within. We are held accountable both from external entities as well as the highest standards of educational operations. These represent the cornerstones of our organization and facilitate key functionality and purpose. These principles ensure stability. Vigilance to these expectations create the foundation for which our district's viability and success. So what we're bringing to the board this evening, and again, if we think about, if we're going results-driven, I, I'm really hoping the idea is that the community knows what's the goal. What is it that we're collectively working on? And then all of these, as we move backward and they become a little bit more dense, are foundational items that people can look at if they would like to, um, because they are in fact important. Um, but there are a lot of words, and I think sometimes in our strategic planning in the past, we've provided lots of words, um, when people really want to know what it is that we're working on. Nonetheless, these guiding principles, we broke down into six different areas. Um, that of academic accountability, federal and state accountability, fiscal responsibility, physical and technical safety, community and stakeholder engagement, and then investment in physical and human capital. So within each of these, um, areas, we've really tried to limit, again, the words to those that are necessary to achieve, um, the goal of what I was just sharing on the last slide. So we've really worked hard to, um, cover all of, all of the nuances of each of these six areas, but intentionally not to, um, use a lot of jargon or educational language or specific products or consumables that we may use in some of these areas. And we've really tried to have every single one of these statements stand on their own as opposed to constantly cover our bases over and over and over again. So I'm, I'm hoping that the board and the community finds that these guiding principles are, um, relatively easy to understand and, and give a sense of wholeness, um, over these six very important, um, parts of our organization. So related to these guiding principles, um, we're seeing next steps as, um, if there are any edits or additions or any things that the board might want us to consider deleting, um, certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have. And as we leave this evening, we are looking for sort of a, a quote-unquote approval, um, that we can go on and move on to next phases of our plan, knowing that we'll consider this more formally when the board accepts the entirety of the new strategic plan this summer. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to our guiding principle, um, draft that we shared in the board packet.
I guess not. I might tell us, you know, very, very straightforward and, and it's kind of basis of work going on, so I appreciate the, the language, and I, I think it's very relatable to, um, anybody who's looking at and really trying to identify, you know, foundationally how we are, so I, I appreciate that language for sure.
We're really looking to help show, you know, in the enormity of our organization, what are some divisions or what are some different cornerstones that we can point to and, and have more focused conversation perhaps with people as things, um, come over time.
I'm really looking forward to seeing this plan, once it's in place later this summer. I mean, these are some fantastic building blocks.
Great. Good, well, thank you. Um, I'll consider that as a soft approval. Yes? Okay. Very good. Um, so the, the next piece then is district beliefs. And if you think back to last month, I said, hey, in, in March, I'll be bringing, um, I'll be bringing, uh, district beliefs and I'll also be bringing guiding principles. So we put together a public engagement, um, community engagement survey that was launched right after the last board meeting, and we had 850-plus, um, staff members and community members complete that survey, which is, um, quite remarkable. And it's also created quite a remarkable set of data for us to be looking at, um, which is exciting. And as I shared with the board, um, we want to do incredibly thorough quality work that engages all of the feedback that we're getting from our community and, and staff members as well. Um, so what I might suggest is that we provide a draft of those district beliefs to you, perhaps within two weeks' time, for you to be able to get your eyes on, give some thought to that when we come back together here in April, then we can take next steps forward with those district beliefs. We're very excited about the level of participation thus far, and I, I think we're seeing that in some of our other work, um, as well. So, um, we'll be moving on to reflecting and reimagining when we come back together in April as well. Um, and that's where we will start working on our district mission, mission and, uh, vision statements, um, which again will be sort of the next steps up from the foundation that we're setting through our principles and beliefs. So, of course, we can, we will, we must. This is incredibly, incredibly good and rich work, and we're excited to be on that journey. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, or I will stand here until we start talking about keeping our schools open, so.
Have any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you on that topic.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up, we'll move to school 2020-21, school reopening update.
I think I need a new title. We're very excited to continue to be in a spot where most of our kids are, um, where they want to be, whether that's a choice of being in person, um, in our elementaries, middle and high school, or for some who are continuing to choose being in a virtually concurrent learning setting. I will just note, um, and perhaps, and forgive me, I'll come back, but I don't think that we can underscore enough, um, the need for us to continue focusing and the fact that we are not out of this pandemic yet. Um, and as excited as we are for vaccinations and excited as we are for student activities and excited as we are for things to be coming a little bit more alive from what we've been, um, living in in the last 12 months, um, we're starting to see an uptick. We're starting to see an uptick in, um, some positivity rates and in some need for quarantine. Um, and we really are appealing to all of our families and studentses. And just in, inside and outside of school, those, those masks, that physical distancing, that keeping track of, of who you're interacting with and what activities you're really prioritizing and trying to keep that, that number relatively small, um, that is what will keep us open this spring, and that is what will allow us to do some of the activities that kids and families are so looking forward to, um, when we start talking about once-in-a-lifetime activities for some of our high school students as well. So we are exciting, uh, excited that we have been really able to remain open, um, as some districts have had a little bit more struggle with that perhaps than others. And of course, concurrent learning is still an option, and we did do a quarter-four, um, survey out to families as to what their preference would be, um, in learning format. And as we've been very transparent through all of this, uh, in our work together, um, we do have more and more families opting to bring their kids back to in-person instruction, which is fantastic. But we do want to be clear that with those additional students, physical distancing does become more of a challenge. So I wouldn't say that we're back to the way things were pre-COVID, um, but particularly um, in common spaces and then in some of our smaller classroom facilities, um, extra bodies means less space, um, and just, and we're, we've been very clear about that as we've been talking with families about their choices and, and staff as well. So while in person, um, we, we're continuing to contact Trace, and it's actually been a, a very busy few days for some of our staff, and, um, quarantine numbers are ticking back up a little bit, um, particularly around student activities. Mitigation strategies, they must remain, um, and we must remain vigilant. We will follow the, the county guidance. We'll definitely consider that heavily as we have in the past, um, depending on how positivity rates, um, move forward. So, um, our concurrent learning format continues, um, and we have seen other districts, um, they have continued to provide additional support for their instructional staff. And where I'm going with that is, um, we've asked the board, um, to trouble our community but support our staff in putting together excellent instruction and teaching and learning for our kids by having an early release each Monday. Um, and our last agreement was through third quarter, which is nearly upon us now. Uh, we would like to suggest to the board that early release continue on Mondays through the remainder of the school year. Again, a second time, we certainly recognize the hardship that does make for some of our families. We really do feel that it is better, um, perhaps than some districts where we're going to one day a week is a virtual only day or, or doing some additional time off of learning. This is probably one of the more efficient ways to keep instructional time up, but also get, um, our staff some additional time to plan for, um, these learning formats that we have in place. Um, our facilities update, um, as is customary, it seems. Um, last year, or last month, since we last met, the cost incurred to the district for facilities use and extra cleaning, given COVID, was $2,204. Finally, related to facilities, um, we would like to suggest, um, an update to the liability waiver, um, I guess, policy for lack of a better word, that, that was put in place earlier in the pandemic and rightfully so. Um, but here we are, we're in a, a different time of the year with different activities, with different needs and different places, um, and with COVID. So currently, waivers are required of facility user groups, including their guests. Um, so we did have a request to modify this requirement, allowing for visiting teams and their guests to be responsible for their own waiver process. Um, all groups would need to continue the mitigation strategies and the other requirements. And I would just add that the group that made this request also upped their mitigation game on their own and, um, have taken a lot of responsibility in ensuring that visiting teams and, um, groups are in fact being very conscious of mitigation strategies, but also the need to accept that responsibility for waiver, should you, uh, allow us to make this change. I think it makes sense for where we are right now. The last appeal perhaps I'll make though is, I really think we need to be careful about unintentional large groups, whether we're inside or outside. I think having spectators at events is great, um, but I do think as spring and summer unfolds, we could start seeing, um, far larger groups than perhaps we intended, um, for some of the, some, some of the groups that use our facilities. So with that, um, for your consideration this evening, I would appreciate a motion related to early release. to early release through the remainder of the school year, a motion related to the change of the liability waiver requirement, and then if you had any changes you wanted to make related to building use, meaning the cleaning fees, that would be something for you to consider this evening as well. I did prepare some draft motions for your consideration on the first two topics, but obviously I'd be happy to answer any questions you have as I take my seat and as you consider your motions. And also just going back to where I started, we continue to be super excited to be open and we'd love to stay there. So the more we can do to really continue to hunker down over the next couple of months when we have kids in buildings and kids, trying to keep them in person, would certainly be appreciated and necessary, so thank you.
Any questions, comments, any of the items you just talked about? Can we roll through one at a time, two if you'd like? All right, let's start with early release. Do we have a motion for early release?
Be resolved that a 1:30 p.m. early release schedule be implemented for students each Monday through the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year to provide for additional teacher preparation time.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul, seconded by Mr. Nickram, and that is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion pass. All right, let's talk facility use waivers.
Be resolved that adult and child waivers and release claims no longer be required for external organizations utilizing district buildings and grounds, and be it further resolved that the organization applying for facilities use sign a statement attesting to notification and enforcement of masking and physical distancing requirements among participants and spectators in alignment with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Amendments.
I'll second.
Any comments on that one? All right. That one will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, last but not least, facilities use and cleaning costs?
Yeah, good with no, I mean, things are looking good, but who knows? So I think we gotta hold the, hold course there for a little longer.
Can we do one for me?
You do nothing.
We're going on here. Okay, next up is personnel request. Looks like we have a preliminary notice of nonrenewal.
Yeah, so you will notice if I say that you were required to provide a preliminary notice of nonrenewal, and there is quite a list there, I'd like to be very clear that this is not performance-related. This is in fact what happens when people are on a one-year contract with the school district. It's a matter of procedure. Just for a bit of further explanation, we did a number of players last year with one-year contracts to allow us some flexibility through COVID and to allow us to make some pivots should we want and potential changes for the upcoming school year. So this is a procedural action and shouldn't be misconstrued as something other than that.
All right, any questions? All right, we're looking for a motion.
Be resolved that a preliminary notice of nonrenewal be issued to the teachers as written. Can I do that? Can I do that?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Paul, seconded by Mr. Nickram, and that's a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And we are down to our items for teacher board review.
Yeah, we have a number of different potential items coming up to us in April, all right? Textbook adoptions, the approval of the 2021-22 compensation system, potential for budget proposals, also a debt deprecence, possibility of performing, performance contracting in associated debt. We'll get an update on the school nursing services, the contract was this evening, and then we invited four healthcare professionals to share with the board some of their good work over the last year. Final notices of nonrenewal, and then individual certified staff contracts. We'll also of course have election results by that time and a reorganization of work, and then the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction COVID-19 regulatory flexibility framework and waivers. So we can talk about some of the flexibility the state gave us that we took advantage of last spring regarding minutes and days, which has allowed us to operate in the format that we have this year. So we will have a public hearing, which will be invented in the April meeting to take care of that procedurally. And then probably some strategic plan and some of the other stuff we'll talk about.
We forgot to mention that fans of the facilities advisory committee should get excited that it's coming back soon.
Yeah, it's a very good point. So we are very pleased to be reigniting the work of our facilities advisory committee, which was just a couple of meetings short of coming, bringing that process full circle. Thank you, COVID. But you actually put us in a great place now to reconvene that group. We have three meetings scheduled. The effort is to be able to have that group provide the board recommendations at its August meeting and long-term planning of facilities and operations. So that work will, it really feels good to start to be doing things that are about the future as opposed to some of the time-consuming pieces we've been dwelling in over the last year, so.
Thank you, Dr. Abbott. All right, everyone's favorite part of the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Be resolved that the Board of Education adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.